I have this one too. I got it going. Your backup. Oh, we're good? Okay, hold on, just wait. And good evening, it is six o'clock, I'd like to call the meeting to order. With that, Katie, can you please provide any staff updates you may have?
Yeah, go ahead and. I'll go ahead and work through the first item, gym parking. So we received an inquiry from the hardwood development group, they wanted to know how many parking stalls are required for a gym. It's not listed in our parking table, and so, in that case, when there's not something listed, then it goes to the planning commission to make a decision on what's required. And you're supposed to consider the other uses in the table that are similar. So, based on that, seemed the most similar was the public and quasi-public institution, which requires four spaces per thousand square feet. Also, the retail sales, shopping centers, they're four per thousand square feet. For a business or professional office, two per thousand square feet are required. And then I looked at some other cities, at their requirements, they were kind of all over the place. I know Justin did, Justin and I sat down and did some math and kind of equalized it, so he can talk about that when it's his turn, but. I would just discuss it and look at the similar uses and decide what you think is appropriate. I've attached the table. And then, the hardwood group that had the question, they also. Had a request in here and some justification for the numbers that they would like to see. So, that's it for me.
Awesome, thanks. I've read through it, is there more outside of what you guys have attached that you'd like to include? Okay, is there, and I don't want to cut you off, it really doesn't matter to me, this isn't going to take very long, but you're good with this, okay. So guys, I'll go first, which I rarely do. I looked through and I mostly just was like, hey, how do we figure out like, because everyone was phrased slightly different for all your examples, plus the common uses. Like, how do we boil this down to a common denominator so we can look at this across the metrics? So when we did the math, North Salt Lake is at eight per thousand, Twin Falls is at four per thousand, Salt Lake is a gross floor, so the calculation has a little asterisk on it. It's at three per thousand, Provo ends up being close to four, they worded theirs funny based off of occupancy, so it would land the same. End up being fifty spaces. And then Riverton was also there, so based off that, three, which is the requested, seems a little bit low compared to like units. And similar, I guess similar uses, not like units. And then, I don't think that they fall in the five range, because then you start talking about based off of active square footage. Now you're talking about fifty parking spaces for a boutique gym, that seems to fall excessive. But I do think like, we have a responsibility to cover our, cover ourselves, because this really isn't just about this applicant, this is also about gyms in general. So, I sort of landed on, after looking at all the numbers, looking at the similar uses, I think that four per thousand is probably the right spot. It's, you know, kind of the midway, it's not pushing it way up, it's not down on the low end, but I think.
For the active, specifically, the active areas.
Active areas, I don't, I don't think, because if you do total square footage, which some of the cities do, then we'd have to cut that number way down. Because again, like, I think that's going to open. So, I think when we look at, at an amendment, like, and adding, I'm assuming we're going to have to add the gym as a line.
I will probably just go ahead and add whatever you decide tonight and then put it in the code.
That's sort of where I was like, well, let's cover ourselves, it'd be a little bit higher than what they're asking, but we'll go with the active square foot.
Would you mind, I know you've done all the research on this, would you mind just identifying the active square footage?
Yeah, so when you look through it, it's called like, I might be saying active, it might be functional, but it's just. When we, when Katie was helping me do the math and like going back through the codes, there's a bunch of people who delineated between total square footage, which would be like locker rooms, utilities, all that sort of stuff, versus like, what's your actual number of treadmills out on the floor that people are going to be using? And so, total doesn't seem like the way most cities had calculated it, it was, you know, functional use area. So, kind of keeping that in mind to arrive at our number, it just seems smarter to just stay with what all the other cities have done, to keep parity. So that is my take. We have two people catching up, so. Here, everybody else's thoughts.
I'll just say that I appreciate the fact that you and Katie have done this research and looked at how other jurisdictions are doing. Handling this issue and the number of parking spaces for like uses, and I concur with your assessment, I think the four per one thousand is a reasonable, reasonable number. I'm curious, I know that I read somewhere in here about how they act, there are spaces that are designed, yeah, right here, functional use area only. Remaining eight thousand square feet includes non-traffic generating uses such as second-story hangout lounge, reception, locker room, staff area. So not the areas where people are working on it, and it seems reasonable to me.
Yeah, and I, like, and I get, we could shoot holes in that, that theory all day long, because, but it just is when Katie was actually explaining the math and reading everybody else's code. For gyms, and even when I looked on the internet for gyms, that seems to be how they calculate. So I was like, oh, alright, no sense in reinventing the wheel, we'll just keep ours in line with the five cities that she listed. Just the tricky part was doing all the math based off of how they phrase it, but I think we got there.
So we want to use like maybe the word exercise space?
Yeah, yeah, or maybe we might have to just check it like specifically, I've been saying active areas, but this, I think says functional use. To look for whatever that term needs to be. So we don't end up in another addict debate. Sure. Yeah, so there wasn't, there wasn't like a, it wasn't where that was specifically named out. Which is sort of what caused me to push the number down a little bit and land kind of like in between that, because to your point, like, this is an orange theory or Vasa. And then, like even Katie and I were, I was joking a little bit about the total population versus the gym versus the parking, like. The problem is, it isn't, like, this is a code change, like, so it would be, orange theory could come in and say, hey, you did this for them, and not, like, why can't we have that too? So it's like, yes, I understand it's boutique, but at the same time, like, we have to, I'm fine with keeping it small, in my opinion, I don't, I don't see a giant Planet Fitness out here. Anytime soon, I just, I think we have to be careful, again, and I'm sort of joking with the whole attic space thing, like, I just don't want to open up Pandora's box. So we have to stay, I think, consistent with the gym verbiage, whether it's boutique or whether it's. There's a gym by my son's school that's got three parking spaces. Go all over the place, it just, I think we have to look at it from.
We're in the hotel mode, we can't get out of it.
I just want us to go away. Boutique gym, so anyway, if you guys missed it, I basically went through and came, well, I came in because my, asking for my ID, but then. I looked at stalls per thousand square feet of functional use or active use. And I read it out, but North Salt Lake lands at eight, Twin Falls is at four, Salt Lake is a little weird because they do gross, so the three is really just an asterisk, because that's actually. Provo is like one space per four occupancy, but I actually first engineered the math using AI, and it lands at fifty spaces. Like, I don't think we're as big as those, but I don't think we're, you know, I think we need to be paired, so that's how I was like, I think. I'm up to.
So I don't like that we don't have any constraints on the nonusable space. Does, you know, just playing devil's advocate and thinking what I could do with this, so if I have a hundred square foot gym in a place, can I say that the rest of my area is, I don't know, restaurants or, you know, massage parlors or different things? And it just seems like we're creating the opportunity for a lot of games unless we have some kind of bounds on the non-exercise space.
Yeah, I mean, it probably would be more straightforward to do something like three per thousand square feet of building. Total, and I think the numbers might be somewhat similar in this case. I think it would be.
More are you talking about?
I'm just saying, if, if we're favorable for parking for gyms as compared to public-private buildings, then why not have a ten-foot, ten-square-foot gym? And have the rest of the, I don't know, any other use?
It's almost needs to be two and a half if you're making total in this example to land consistent. So it's like, do you do? Do you, do you say two and a half rounded to the nearest stall?
Well, yeah, it always is, you don't have to say that, but yeah, I guess that would be. I don't know.
No, I mean, like, I, I am open to debate, and I understand, I think that the, the way we got down that path was all the other.
Yeah.
But.
Just, we did do, we looked at the rec center in town, and they're at about two per thousand square feet. I know sometimes it's a little crowded over there. Hard to find a spot when all the kids are, it's a different situation than this is going to be, but again, all in the same category. When all the kids have their classes, everything's going on at night, it does get a little crowded over there. Like, size of vehicles, I just. Husband's truck, and it sucks finding a parking spot, and so, and it's hard to, because you don't want to like overpark a building, because then you have like all this ugly parking, it's not getting used, and it's. But also, you want to make sure you've got enough parking. So you can't spill it on, especially. This is the Route thirty-two.
Have a definition on when something.
You're such a good attorney. I, no, we don't have a gym, I like, we don't have a definition of a gym, but, this isn't, what we're doing tonight isn't a code change, they're coming in like, hey, we have this question. I will roll it into the code change that we've previously been working on, because I'll just find as well, while we've already talked about it. And I could just use a very typical legal definition of a gym, if you want me to add that into the code, I'm happy to.
Well, I guess. Well, so, I, I like the idea that all the other people use. Active space, like, well, let's mimic that, if we mimic that, we mock up kind of to a similar number. I'm, I'm not so much concerned whether we use total or active, like, it doesn't really matter to me. Just if we use total, then we're going to have to push this number down, I'd like them still like same ballpark. Because I think fifty is way too many. Thirty is like probably right on the edge, but my concern, thirty's probably fine for this, but I don't think thirty if. I don't think if we got another gym, like, because this isn't, I'm trying to separate it, it's hard to separate, but.
You can't really, because it's.
Because it's going to be a code.
For its general, right, so it could be an orange theory.
So it's like, yes, I think pushing forty to this, this scenario based off what they're describing is probably a little excessive. If it were orange theory or Planet Fitness or whoever, like, then it's probably going to be a little bit on the small side, but we're still, you know, I think covered. So, that's, I guess that's what I'm wrestling with in my mind, it doesn't matter to me. Or whether we. Active, and if everybody thinks like total's going to be much easier calculation.
I think it avoids the attic space issue.
Yeah, exactly, then I'm fine, like, I'm fine with doing total, but then, at that point, I'd almost say it's probably like more like.
If we did two and a half.
But yeah, but I think, yeah, two and a half or two is probably fine, because then if you do one eighteen here at thirty, two and a half is like.
In this case.
Yeah, in this case, so yeah, I mean, again, to me, I'm not tied to either, I just think that's. calculation based off of all the math I made, Katie helped.
No guarantee, no promises that it's actually, no, it should be good, but.
I think with a small staff too, it would be. Because some of the others. A bunch of full, yeah, so they can go through and calculate, yeah, this is what qualifies as active. You know, office.
I have a question, Katie.
Sure.
For our existing, what's our current practice today? Using, say, the animal hospital out there and presuming that this three spaces for one thousand square feet was applied. It's on the current table, right, let's just assume that happened. And then the animal hospital moves out and a mortuary moves in, five spaces per one thousand. In order for them to be able to operate a mortuary, do we require them to add those spots?
Yeah, so. When they apply for the business license, we check to make sure that they have enough parking. So, the pet lodge, that was easy, because they built the building, designed it for the parking we required for it, but it, say they go away and a mortuary comes in, then we'll have to look at recalculating that, and they might need more parking, or it might just not be a good place for a mortuary.
And then if the animal hospital currently started to host weddings, then that would be.
Same thing.
improper land usage though, right?
When they apply for the business license, we would look at the parking and making sure they had enough for that business.
So when they're doing something different than what they applied for, theoretically, that would be something that just have to be enforced?
Yeah, uses can change, like, for example, when we looked at the Route thirty, thirty-two development, they were planning on using it mostly for professional and office space, so that's two per thousand. So, if they have restaurants and banks and other uses there that require more parking, then we'll have to look at how that's going to work. And they'd have to find more parking if they have a lot of these more higher intensity uses. Reciprocal. For sure, when they're not overlapping the times. They just have to come back and talk to us about that, like, when they know the specific businesses and hours of operation. Yeah, or if they, I mean, they really, over there with what they're building, and they could end up using a lot of, having some warehouse space, which is only one per thousand. So, depending on how they mix it, you know, be right, I don't know, it really depends on the businesses that are there.
If you did space per five hundred square feet, the total eighteen hundred square feet, or eighteen thousand square feet, that'd be thirty-six space.
So that's two per thousand?
One per five, yeah, two per thousand.
Yeah, I mean, I'm. Two, two and a half, probably somewhere in there. Like, like why, I, I mean, I think like at this point, we're splitting areas over four parking spaces, like, I don't know, that's worth. I would, if, does anybody have any more questions, I want to.
I, I think, I wouldn't be opposed to having a separate category for boutique gyms, but we don't even have gyms defined.
How do you define a boutique gym, yeah?
Right, I think philosophically, I have no problem with that, but it's kind of two steps.
Yeah, I mean, I think the lawyer has a good point, if we totally keeps it clean, and then we just have to push our number down to land at about the same number, I don't. You know, I don't think you have anything to worry about. I'm, I'm, I'm good with it, I think we can be. It's, it's eighteen, yeah, so a two would be thirty-six, they're asking for a thirty. I think two and a half is just higher.
Forty-five. Good, it's not for this specific gym, although that's, they're, they're asking the question.
Their, their gym brought up the question, but now we have to address this gym in total, so it's like, hard to not, it's hard to not want to separate the two, but. What's your number, I guess?
I think I'd leave.
Down the spot, what's your favorite? Okay, well. But yeah, but that was a different calculation, so two and a, two and a half, two and a half lands. Two and a half, so I guess I'll entertain a motion, uh, whatever. To set the parking spaces for gyms for our use, that's what I would entertain. Come on, lawyer.
Motion that we set the parking spaces. Oh, yeah, it's been a while.
No, actually, it is, this is your decision.
Oh, this is ours?
So which is correct.
Yeah, let's just make a motion for two and a half spaces per thousand square feet of building size, gross space.
And I need a second? They tied. Okay, Scott's taking the second. We'll, we'll vote ladies first then.
Aye.
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 That was unanimous?
Yeah. Two and a half per total.
Per thousand total.
Per thousand total.
Okay, that's easy, great.
Cool. Thank you. You're welcome to stay there, feel free, we won't, we won't be offended.
Okay, next item is the Farms at Francis subdivision. This is a three-lot subdivision. And it's in the residential half zone. All the lots are much bigger than a half acre, so they meet the requirements. They've shown the ditch that's on the property on the plat correctly, they're going to have access from Country Lane by a cul-de-sac, so they're just extending Country Lane and adding a cul-de-sac to the end. That will be dedicated as a public right-of-way. One of the requirements in the code for any single access point is we have to have twelve lots or, twelve lots or less. And that requirement is met here. There's a, on the adjacent subdivision, it shows a sixty-foot wide private road, and that is going to be relocated, as shown on the plat, cul-de-sac. One interesting fact about this is it's in an area of the city that doesn't have sewer, sewer service. So, the city council gave approval for the applicant to use a private wastewater disposal system or septic tank. So they'll need to submit documentation of the septic system approval from Summit County Health before the final plat application. And then eventually, the lots will all connect to the municipal system once we have sewer in that area. They will have city water, so. Anyway, to me, they, we worked through the revisions, gone through that review process, they've incorporated everything. I think the preliminary plat meets all of our requirements, so I would recommend approval, and the public carrying is not required for this item. So that's it for me, Scott, I think you had a staff report.
Yeah. They've got a, they're connecting to our water system, and they're extending the water line, but we've got a note on the plat, because these are bigger lots. They don't want to turn in enough water to irrigate the entire lots, so we're going to put a note on the plat that will limit the amount of irrigation that will, they'll be allowed to do with the city, um, water, unless they turn in more water. We're still kind of working through that, they've got to turn in at least one acre foot per, but if they want to irrigate more, they can turn, so we're just working through that. We're retaining the stormwater on site, other than that, the, the plans meet our specifications. Now, it's culinary and it will limit how much they can irrigate outside.
As a practical matter, how do we do that?
How do we do that?
Yeah.
We just have to watch, it's, we've got several, and it's going to be more common. We have to watch what people. We just have to, you know, when they turn in their site plan, Katie will check to see the landscaping, see if they've got the whole thing landscaped or. That's it for me.
Okay. Feels unfair to may let one side speak. You guys have anything you want to add? I assume this is what you're here for. Alright, can you come to the mic and, sorry?
So, yeah, basically I just.
They won't, it'll be when they come get their building permit that they have to submit their approval of their septic system.
I guess I just.
Yeah, we've, we've got all that, but you'll have to have Summit County permit to get your building permit. Yep, we can put that on the plat.
Well, I don't.
We can put on the plat that they got a.
Yeah, I think I was looking at the review comments we had, and we put the, had to be before final, but.
I just, yeah, just think about it now, Summit County's not going to approve the septic systems without seeing the house and how big the house is.
So we need to have the, for building. That makes sense to me, I think that's how I've done it on other ones.
Sounds like they have a solution, anything else? Awesome, thank you. Um, I'll open it up for comment, does anybody want to go first?
I have no comment, this plan looks great.
Already have, like.
Fair enough, I'll trade you straight across from my house. Alright, was there anything else?
Go for it.
Uh, I motioned to, uh,
Second.
Aye.
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 Awesome. Need a man. Um, looking at our Park City, or, no, not Parks, DC, throwing me off, planning commission. Uh, we need to approve some minutes, I saw it, there was a draft and a final, is there a difference? Probably the final.
I think they were the same, so, I think since you got logged into Dropbox, yeah, so I think it's the same.
I, I have reviewed it prior to the meeting and found it to be an accurate reflection of, um, and we had some excuse, so, yes. Scott, did you have anything?
I found it to be.
Reading the minutes again.
I found it to be an accurate reflection, having read through it, uh, and I didn't see anything changed.
I concur.
Uh, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
Vote.
Aye.
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 Okay, moving through our agenda.
Hey.
Staff update.
Just a few things, so, the code amendment was supposed to go to council this month, but they ended up canceling their meeting because we're out of the five, we're out of town. So I'm expecting it to go next month, uh, and then we, the city council looked at the architecture again. They denied the architecture for this Town Center Hotel next door once, and it came back and they denied it again, twice. And then, um, we just found out last week that the applicant appealed that decision, or they, or likely, they did appeal it, and, anyways, so now we have an appeal on each of the hotels, this one from the applicant, the other one from the homeowners association. Uh, so they're both kind of like, at a, you know, just paused, but the Town Center project, they are moving forward with construction of the rest of it. Not the hotel portion, but of the other part of the development. Uh, and then last thing, Frontier Days, I'll let Ray talk about this, but we do have Frontier Days coming up. That's our staff update.
Respect to those sides, if people could not put those in the public right of way, if any, pervert at Summit County. Put them in your yard.
Hey, Ray, I'll take thirty.
I'll put a public right of way.
Just all the way down thirty-two, right? Yep, that's alright, they'll end up right back here.
I have a question, can you give us an, us an update about elections?
I would love to give you an update about elections, that's great, so, um, we had two people put in for mayor. So Jeremy Foreman, current mayor, and then Byron Ames, the previous mayor, he put in. Um, and then for city council, we had six people put in for the two spaces. So Justin and Scott both put in, you'll be familiar with them, and then.
I've never heard.
But, um, from the current council, the two that are, their spots are up, they also put in again, so, Clayton Query and Shannon Fryer, and then we had two new ones, Lindsay Stone and Riley Atkinson. I know that there have been some articles on the park record, if you're interested in learning more about the campus. And I, you, stay tuned, I think we might have a meet and greet before the primary. Yeah.
Any other staff updates? I will entertain a motion.
Second?
Aye.
Aye.
Hey, thanks, everyone.
Keep it this length.
I wish. I don't have anything for August yet, so stay tuned, and maybe we'll see.